Good morning.
You ready to get up?
Mm-hmm.
You gonna smile and you gonna say, "I'm mad?"
I'm not mad.
Smile.
I always smile.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the Mobile County Commission meeting, October the 26th, 2020. If we would, rise for a quick prayer and a salute, and we will get started. Dear Heavenly Father, I give you praise, Lord, praise for this commission, praise for the opportunity to serve the people we do in our district, in our counties, in our state, and in this country. We pray a peace on this country and a peace on the business that we do today. We give you glory in all things, in Christ's name. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Dana, do we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, we do. The first speaker is Councilmember Beth Rich to discuss Nevis Road.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilwoman. How are you?
I'm terrific. Thank you so much, and thank you for this ability to address you about your agenda item dealing with Nevis Road extension. On the city council's agenda for tomorrow is also the agreement, which, after much research and thought, I have concluded is a very flawed process at this time. If you'll look at your agreement that you have in front of you, and for those that are not familiar with Nevis Road, it is basically considered a major street by our pavement assessment. So it is a street that gets a lot of use. When the city annexed the area back in, I believe it was '08, they took on the Nevis Road off of Hillcrest, and it was constructed to county standards, which meant that it did not have curb and gutter, has open drainage, and is substantially different than the roads that we normally build in our city. We have regulations and rules, and I have a question about paragraph, well, number four on page two of your agreement.
Which, can you tell us which agenda item that is?
Um...
Seventeen?
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine.
But on page two of the agreement, and if you'll refer where it says, "The county shall comply with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations." So my question is, does the county who will be letting go this contract prepare to do what is normally done in a city-street construction? Which would be curb, gutter, drainage, not in open ditch format, lighting of the street, rights-of-way for sidewalks. Those are standards that are part of a road construction.
Would you like me to address that?
I would love for you to. That's why I'm giving you the hard stare.
The segment of Nevis Road that we're proposing to construct is indeed inside the city limits. The segment that is located just to the east of Hillcrest Road, portions of that are in the county and maintained by the county. It is an open-ditch section. We are proposing to construct the segment from Hillcrest Road westward over to Soli in substantial conformance with what is located east of Hillcrest Road. It will comply with all of the Alabama Department of Transportation specifications. That is what the pay-as-you-go program mandates, and we have submitted our plans, sixty percent, to the City of Mobile Engineering Department. We have received their redlined comments, and we are in the process of incorporating those redlined comments into our ninety percent design plans. We did not and do not anticipate building a curb-and-gutter section. If the City of Mobile requires that, we would have thought they would have let us know that several years ago. We do not anticipate that. We do not have the funding set up for that. So if that paragraph that Councilwoman Rich is referring to mandates that it be a curb-and-gutter section, then I would recommend that we just remove that, revise it, because we don't have the funding for it.
Councilwoman, are you prepared to pick up the cost if we go with the curb-and-gutter and light it? I mean, are y'all prepared to pick up that additional cost?
I would submit that I am lobbying the administration to not do a substandard road, not to bless what is basically not allowed by anyone who would construct a street system in the city of Mobile. But however, I do think there is also another pathway forward, which is why I would love for this to slow down, and that would be to work with the owners. And because the county and the city have allocated funds, we don't normally do this for private property. Normally, when someone comes into the city of Mobile to construct a street, it's tied to subdivision of the property. However, this one is not, and so I think that's giving the city and the county the excuse to do it to a substandard condition. But it's something that the citizens of Mobile deserve better, because, again, when you have open ditches, when you have no lighting on a street, and this is considered a major road in our city. It's not a minor street. It's already labeled. The extension, and I imagine, will keep the same label, being a major road. So we know that the traffic will build on the street once it is constructed. My office already gets calls about Nevis Road that's in the city limits, because we're used to streetlights and adequate sides of the road that do not include open-ditch drainages. As a matter of fact, councilmembers work real hard to close up open ditches, because they breed mosquitoes, they're not as safe in a roadway system, which is why we have these rules and regulations. But, again, normally, if you come to the city of Mobile, this would not pass our engineering department at all for construction, because it's missing the components of an adequate road improvement program. And by getting the county to let go this, I think that's a way, I guess for a lack of a better term, to end zone getting it accomplished, but not in the manner that is normal for the city of Mobile. When we have pay-go projects, it's my understanding, for the most part, that the county hands over the funding to the city of Mobile, and when the program is in the city limits, the road is constructed to city standards. This is completely reversed, and, again, it is creating an opening of private property, which will have value and will also be good for the city of Mobile, will continue a major road, so I get all this. My office has not been involved with any of the plans or any of the information on this program. And I understand another reason to slow this down is that the property is actually not in the public's trust yet. So that would be another reason to slow this down, not to proceed with the agreement as it's written. And, again, I believe that there needs to be another party at the table in order to accomplish this goal and to make sure that the road that is constructed does not have to be maintained later and all kinds of funding to make it safer and more in keeping with the rest of the city's road segments. We only have the Nevis Road now in the city limits, because we annexed it in and it was already constructed. It would never have been constructed if it had been in the city under those conditions, with the open ditches and no curbing, no gutters, no streetlights. These are just things that make a road safer, and it's why we require these of developers and for the private sector when they are opening up their property for development.
Mr. President, I've got some questions, and I'll direct these at Brian first. This does seem to be very unusual, and I did not notice, when I first got the contract, that the county was, in fact, overseeing the work, letting the contracts, and it was built to county standards. I completely understand what Councilwoman Rich is saying. Having represented a city council district, I know how important it is that our roads meet all city standards, with curb and gutter and lighting requirements and so forth, so that certainly hits a chord with me. But why the unusual nature of this, I don't really understand. Why is the county overseeing this project as opposed to providing the funds to the city as we do with other roads, like Ziegler and other roads that are a part of our pay-go program? And why, I guess, the other question I have is, why would the city not require this project to meet their own standards? If they require developers, everybody else who brings plans to the city of Mobile for road improvements, they have certain standards they have to meet. Why is this an exception? And the last thing that's on my mind, that is, that I think that Councilwoman Rich has raised, is the concern about the fact that if the county builds this road, and it's not to city standards, how, what guarantee would we have that the city would even accept maintenance on this road? Do we know that for a fact at this point?
Commissioner, other than verbal assurances from the city at this point, we do not have that assurance from the city of Mobile that they would accept maintenance, other than the fact that it is within their jurisdiction, their city limits. To address the previous question of how this became a county lead project, there was a desire from certain entities that we pushed this road through to relieve some of the congestion on Hillcrest Road up there at Cottage Hill. Right now, a substantial amount of the traffic that is going westbound on Nevis Road turns north on Hillcrest, and it makes its way northward up to Cottage Hill and to Greelot Roads. This would allow an opportunity for traffic to make their way all the way over to Soli and therefore reduce some of that congestion. You know, Soli Road is developing rather rapidly. It would also open up a substantial area for development within the city limits of the city of Mobile. I think there was a prevailing attitude that this was an advantageous project, and the county was willing to serve as the lead agency moving forward with the design, the bidding, the construction, everything in accord with Alabama Department of Transportation specifications, and basically matching the typical section of the roadway located just to the east of Hillcrest Road.
Can I just add one thing? The proposal that's in front of you and the one that Councilmember Rich has, there were some changes made by Flo Kessler. I would point the commission and Ms. Rich out at least paragraph seven and to answer Commissioner Hudson's comments. Paragraph seven of the agreement says, upon accepting, I'm paraphrasing, the final quantities and the contractor, et cetera, once work has been completed, the city, county would convey its interest in maintenance, rights-of-way connection work to the city. So on page three, paragraph seven addresses that. So this document that you see, presented to the commission today, does come after a review of changes by Ricardo Woods and Flo Kessler, or whatever that's worth.
But what I'm hearing is, this matter has not been voted on by the city council yet. It is up for consideration, and if, for whatever reason, if Councilwoman Rich's concerns are shared by the other council members, who may be concerned about substandard, according to city standards, roads that don't meet standards that they've set, they're concerned about those being built in their districts, then there may be, they may decide not to approve this. And I know this is a pay-as-you-go project, but I'm wondering, would it not be prudent to not, to wait, to set this aside and work through these issues to make sure that the road is at least meeting whatever standards that the city feels like is a minimum to set up on this road? And I think she's got a good point. I mean, there are safety issues, you have to have lights, this is a very dark area, there's no development in there, and I would, if I were still representing District Six, I would have the same exact concerns.
Well, let me address this. Councilwoman, we, you and I have been talking about this for about four years, so it's not something we've just sprung on you. We've had a couple of meetings.
No meetings, no official meetings, my office at least. We talked.
But you were involved in community meetings that we did have, and you've never expressed any of this concern to me. Why now?
Okay.
Excuse me. This project goes back five, six years. This project goes back, it was an idea Joe Ruffer had twenty-plus years ago. That was the whole reason for cutting Nevis Road through where it's at now, with the intentions of carrying it all the way through for traffic flow, but none of this has come up. We had it on the 2018 pay-as-you-go, we have it on the 2020 pay-as-you-go. None of these concerns have come up until the last meeting I have sitting here, and I'm curious why.
Okay, that's an excellent question, and I don't blame you for asking it. When I was approached about opening up Nevis, as your engineer has already stressed, this will be really a good street to have in our inventory, because of the crowding of Hillcrest, and people can only get it from Soli, from Greelot, and Cottage Hill right now. So it'll open up another leg, so to speak. And when Nevis opened up, Hillcrest took a lot of that traffic, because people can go all the way out to I-10 or to Highway 90. So it is a really, that's why it's a major road. My office never objected. However, the last time I spoke to anybody about this, it was with our city engineer. So I just, and perhaps, obviously, because I'm down here now, assumed that the program would be built to city standards. I just never dreamt that it would be done by the county, because that's not how we do things, through pay-as-you-go. It's always the city takes control, and the city does the construction. I mean, there's a history there. So my alarm buttons came up last week at city council, when the mayor put the 1.5 million to end this agreement, came to my office. I was not privy, I've not seen any drawings. I do not know how large the slopes are for the open drainage, because perhaps when it's developed, sidewalks would come from the developers that develop off of that street. But if there are huge elevations and slopes to the drainage, there'll never be that connectivity. We have worked really hard to not wave sidewalk connections. It is essential to quality of life. And, again, my office is already being asked to put lighting on Nevis Road. As a matter of fact, I worked with your office, which I thanked you at the time, to help get at least a streetlight at the intersection of Hillcrest and Nevis. But the rest of the roadway is unlit. And, again, without any development and opening this up, it is actually perhaps creating a liability with open ditches, no lighting, and it's substandard. I don't think any councilperson or anybody in the city of Mobile would be proud to be part of this agreement. I know I would work with my colleagues to make sure that the right funding was in place. And I don't mean to blindside you by any stretch, because your timing and my timing are just now colliding, but this is only before me. Last week, we get one week to rest an item. So this will be voted on, but I will lobby very hard that not everyone is at the table, and myself included, and then also the fact that it was not done to city standards, and we have standards for safety reasons.
Why didn't you apply those standards to Schillinger's Road, when we widened Schillinger's Road through your district?
Schillinger's Road already exists. I mean, this is a brand-new street.
But we widened it through your district, and they still have open ditches.
I'll give you a very good example of a developer...
Exactly what you're talking about there. Hillcrest Road's another example.
I'll give another example of the city working with a developer in District Six. There were two dirt roads, and there were two programs that the city, that the developer wanted to put, they were student housing, at the ends of these dirt roads. Well, the city would not approve their subdivision of the property unless they created the street all the way down to Old Shell Road under their financial ability to do it with curbing, gutter, sidewalks, and lighting. And so that's an example that the right-of-way was already secured, but developers give the right-of-way to the city all the time. It's really not like a gift. It allows them the ability to construct something and get to their projects, their programs for future development.
Councilwoman, if this item were to be held over, would you be willing to work with your colleagues and with the administration to find a way to add additional funds to this project, to add these amenities that are part of the standards?
I truly see this as the key. When something is in the pay-as-you-go program, like I said, it's normally, if it's in the city limits, it's built to city standards, especially something new. And, again, my office was not included, other than casual conversations with interested parties. I don't disagree, and I've watched the pay-as-you-go, but I sort of assumed the pay-as-you-go would grow. I know the first segment of pay-as-you-go was for the planning of the street. And then this year, there's additional funding, and so my office just assumed this was a growing program to then also meet standards that would, I just never dreamt it would be built to county standards. Now, there's anything wrong with your county standards, I'm not trying to take away, but we are an urban area, and this is an area that was due to grow and deserves to have a street that everyone can look at and say, "That was done correctly." This one will not be done correctly until all those changes will be made. And I say do it at the planning and do it from the get-go, and that's why I'm asking you to rest this now, because that's exactly what I'll ask. And if the city is unwilling to add additional funds to meet their code with resources they have available, then the people interested in seeing this happen for their development perspectives and future wherewithal should be at the table, because normally, the city and county is not at the table with a private-sector developer. But I understand, which was...
We deal with private developers all the time. We're constantly working with developers on right-of-way.
Right.
I mean, that's not an unusual thing for us, and we've worked with this group for three years, four years? I mean, so it's not, it's not, longer than that, but it's not like it's just something that's just popped up.
I understand that.
And I'm curious on the timing more than anything.
But I can't, I can't, it's unfortunate...
And do you realize how much money we have spent already on this project?
Yes, and the thing is, I agree that the road is needed. I just never dreamt it would be a substandard street under the inventory of the city of Mobile. It was just out of my equation, and I don't apologize for that, it's just what the normal courts would be.
All due respect, I mean, the infrastructure in the city of Mobile needs some help. You have nowhere to grow, no real path of new subdivisions. We needed a thoroughfare to pull traffic off of Soli. This is the answer for it. Now, the fact it doesn't meet your requirements, I'm okay with that, as long as you pay for it. As long as you put the lights in and you want the curb and gutter, that's fine, because we're not building this for developers. We're building this for traffic flow for us.
I think that's what she's asking for, Commissioner, but I think that she wants...
And then to let her come up with the money, but to come up here at the last minute and slam us with it, I think it's unfair.
I think she wants the opportunity to try to identify, and I think it's fair to honor her request. She represents this district, she has a lot of people that would be impacted by this, as well as the whole city of Mobile. And I think to just delay this long enough to figure out a way to try to identify additional funds to bring this road up to standard is not too much to ask.
Well, I'm not in favor of pulling it off the agenda, and if we pass it, it gets kicked to you. If you can kill it in the city, so be it, that's fine. But everybody that's stuck in traffic on Soli Road and on Hillcrest Road, keep in mind, we tried to help. We tried to help.
And I would hope we would try to keep them as safe as possible and meet standards.
Of course. That's the reason I lit that intersection up, as you requested.
We got one light on it, and I don't know what the electrical source is out there, but we did get, and I thank you for that, sir.
Is that not what you asked for?
We asked for two, but we only got one.
Oh, you didn't want to pay for the second one?
No, I was told 25K would be for both, and that's why we split it. But I'm not with Alabama Power, so I don't know all the nuances, but I was glad to see the light. But the whole street down on the other end needs lit. I mean, it is not a safe street for people to drive, and I have no idea what the contours are on the next road part of the extension. I would like to be able to see the plans. I would have liked to be at the table when we're this close to letting something go. And, again, mine were casual conversations. I don't disagree with your county engineer or Commissioner Carl, because I know that the road is needed. So I don't disagree that there should be play to have the road happen.
Just not fall back on your city staff?
Just not in the condition, because I feel that citizens deserve a safer and a road in our corporate limits that actually meets the requirements that, from the beginning.
Don't you think that's a city engineering issue? They should have brought it to you and worked with you on it?
I'd never had a conversation further with a city engineer to assume that there were anything that he would not pass if it was done within our city, so I can't speak for him.
Lord, I can't control mine, I know I can't control yours, so...
Commissioner, I might add that the improvements that were made to Hillcrest Road, the five-lane from Three-Nice Road northward all the way up to Gerby, that's all four-lane, five-lane curb and gutter, no streetlights involved with that. Several of the streets out there in Western Mobile that are under city control, a lot of them were built with pay-as-you-go funds. There's no street lighting on any of that. There's not any street lighting on the segment of Nevis Road to the east of Hillcrest Road going over toward Highway 90. The typical section that we're proposing to build just fits what is east of Hillcrest Road, albeit it is inside the city of Mobile. If they needed us to build this to city standards, quote, "standards," that they like to see on their roads, they should have brought this to our attention years ago.
Years ago. That's the key right there, years ago.
I mean, we're looking at over $5 million that we're getting ready to spend on this segment of road. If you want to go four- or five-lane curb and gutter, you're probably looking $12 million or better. There's a lot of additional money involved.
How much did you say?
Probably $11 to $12 million would be our best guess right now.
So the price of the road would double?
At least.
Well, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
What harm would it do to hold this over, to be able to get an answer from the administration regarding this project? Because if it fails, then that's money that's been spent anyway.
If it fails, at that point in time, I would suggest we turn this project over to the city of Mobile, let them be the lead agency. We provide them the funding that we have set up and the two pay-as-you-go programs, and let them be the lead agency.
And I think that's what the expectation was.
And we'll facilitate the acquisition of some right-of-way and things of that nature with some of the property owners out there. I think we would be happy to do that. We would help any way that we could. But at that point in time, I would suggest that we turn this over to the city and let them be the lead agency.
What, so we're in the design phase? We have sixty percent of design?
We're somewhere between sixty and ninety percent complete, yes, ma'am.
Of design. So then we have permitting.
We have already reached agreements with the property owners out there for the dedication of the right-of-way at no charge to the county of Mobile, and there's going to be a little bit of utility relocation that will be involved. Other than that, we will be ready to go to construction probably within the next year.
So there will be no permits we have to get from the city?
Well, through their engineering department, yes. By virtue of them reviewing the plans and approving the plans, yes.
This is my fear, that we will approve this with 1.5 million, and we get all the way through and we hit permitting, that all of these issues that are being raised now will then pop up. And we will have only asked the city for 1.5, and we will need a whole lot more than that to be able to complete this road. And I don't, I feel really vulnerable trying to go back and ask for more. This number now does not seem meaningful in light of what we're hearing from Councilmember Rich.
Oh, absolutely. If they mandate that a four-lane or a five-lane curb and gutter, that will negate all of the existing agreements for right-of-way dedication out there, it will probably at least double the cost of the road, maybe triple. I mean, you're, hey, $11, $12 million may be the low end of that type of a roadway. I mean, you're, hey, 11, 12 million may be the low end of that type of a roadway.
And the city will have put in 1.5 million.
Well, what I would suggest at that time is that we provide the city by agreement, an intergovernmental agency agreement, the money that we have dedicated to this project through the two pay-as-you-go programs, that we provide them that amount of money, and then they can come up with the remainder.
That seems like the safer, safer way to go.
Yeah. And they would become the lead agency at that time.
This felt like a, it probably felt like a good idea as long as it was flowing along and we weren't having problems with us being the lead agency, but...
Yeah, we did not anticipate this at all.
Commissioner, do you have any level of discomfort about?
I do. I think the timing is just horrible. I think it's a setup. I don't like, no. It's been three, four, five years in the plan. We've talked to everybody. We try to work through the chain of command, which is through the engineers, through their engineering department. The fact that the engineering department's not dealing with the city councilman, that has nothing to do with us. I mean, everything's been above board. We've talked to everybody. I mean, my job is to talk to the mayor. I've talked to the mayor. That's done. So I just, I feel like this is, there's a lot more to this story than what's going on. But you do what you feel like you need to do. You feel like you need to do, and today's my last day, so it's not a big deal. But I think the taxpayers deserve to have their money spent better. I think we've wasted a whole bunch of money on this project for nothing, for political reasons, and that infuriates me. It's the money. It's not the fact I'm not getting my way. So I don't care if the road's built or not. I mean, in reality, somebody will build that road one day. But I think the politics here is the dangerous part of it. And you're fooling with taxpayers' money, and that gets me upset. So let's move on. You got anything else to add?
If I could clarify that, like I said, I'm not going to apologize for the collision that's taking place right now, because I cannot look at any agreements until they're given to my office. And like I said, the last conversation I had was that it was with the city engineer, and to me, that is something that says it is going to be done to city standards. And I believe that there is a pathway, there are two pathways forward that are better than letting go a substandard street in the City of Mobile. And that would be, one, to lobby the administration of the City of Mobile, meaning not necessarily coming from all of you, but from my office, to say that a substandard street should not be acceptable. So are there additional funds, whether it's over a two-year period, whatever, but not to leave it in the condition it is now to build something that we know is not a safe, especially on a major street. It's considered a major street according to pavement assessment, on Nevis Road. And then to look at working with the owners of the property, because if everyone was to rest everything and not do anything, eventually someone is going to want to get to that property, and they would have to come in and get it subdivided, and then that would be built to city standards, because that's exactly how it would work. And so if there is, if there is an incentive, like you said, from city and county at this point, but doesn't do it to a standard that should be followed throughout that area so that we can have the sidewalks, the lighting, everything that is required, and that would be not to do the open drainage, to maybe make the street a certain width now with right-of-way later, because I understand it's 100-foot right-of-way that is going to be deeded. At least that's the information that my office has. Like I said, I have not seen, I've not seen any agreements other than what is the council, in front of the council, and that is to work an intergovernmental relationship and agreement with all of you. And again, it is not something that my office has done. It is what I'm reacting to, and what I'm trying to tell this commission is something that is not the normal standard and should not be accepted by your commission at this point until there are proper resources to construct the road as it should be constructed in the City of Mobile. And that was always the assumption that my office took at all times. And not being in the recent conversations, I mean, you can ask your personnel. I've not sat with any of them. So I don't have, I don't have the knowledge. I would have questioned at that point. So you would have heard a lot sooner that there were concerns that a substandard street was going to be built in the district that my office represents. And I'm the biggest advocate for that district.
Commissioners, I might add that the review comments that we received from the city engineering department made no reference to additional typical section, additional pavement. They did have a few comments about concrete ditches, things of that nature, but no mention of any substandard roadway typical section. So we are marching ahead until we get orders from the commission to stop.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So it would be a-
We got any other speakers, Dana?
It would be a county road then, technically, because it wouldn't meet our standards.
I'm not the one to make that part of that decision, because today's my last day up here, so.
Mr. President, may I ask Jay a question?
Sure.
So Mr. Ross, if we approve this agreement today, and then everything goes haywire, and we end up in a situation where we are being asked to build a road that we don't have the finances to do, can we walk away from this? This is what our county engineer was suggesting. Can we just walk away from it, hand it to the city, and be done? Or are we still obligated under this agreement?
No. The agreement has not been signed by the city, so if the commission were to approve this today, if the city doesn't approve it next Tuesday or whenever the schedule comes up, we don't have an agreement.
It dies. I mean, the project dies.
If the city doesn't approve it as presented, or then it dies, the other arrangements are made to help.
So that's what I'm proposing. Let's go ahead and push it on here, and then let the councilwoman do what she's going to do on her end. And if it dies, it dies. If it doesn't die, great, we got a project.
That's what I would recommend, commissioners, at this point in time. Let's move ahead. If the city decides that they really don't want this street, just let them kill it. I might want to point out that we do have timeframe constraints within the right-of-way agreements with the property owners out there. We have to have this thing under construction within about the next three years, I believe, or those agreements we have are negated. So there's a timeframe involved here also.
How much have we spent on that project so far? Just rough guess.
Several hundred thousand dollars, Commissioner.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President, I would be in favor of honoring Councilwoman Rich's request to give her an opportunity to try to work this out with the administration before we go through all these steps, which may be for naught in the end. I think that it would be, and if we, and if through that conversation with the administration, it appears that we need to turn this project over to the city, then that's what we can do. But let's give her the benefit of having that conversation with the administration and her colleagues to try to figure out a way to make this work. I don't think this is all for naught, and I don't think anything is going to die. I think we just need to pause here and let, and work with the city and get the city on board to meet their own standards. And if they don't choose to do that, then perhaps the project may die. I don't know.
Well, let's leave it on the agenda, and ladies, y'all can vote it up or vote it down, whatever, however you feel. So let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, you have any other speakers?
Did I just have?
Sure.
Okay. It was on, Councilmember Rich, it was on your last Tuesday's agenda. Okay, this is Monday, this is Tuesday. Have you had intervening conversations with engineering and administration since then?
I sent questions to the administration, and I got some answers, but they weren't very clear, because I learned that, I asked whether the rights-of-way had already been accepted by the commission. I asked whether, let me get me, excuse me, if you don't mind, but I asked a bunch of questions, because that's all I can do when you're not at the table ahead of time to be aware of what was going on.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is, in those intervening conversations, were you able to move? Because I'm assuming we didn't hear anything else from the city saying, "We aren't ready." Did you get any indication that there was going to be any movement to do anything?
I can only work with my colleagues, and I'm planning to get with each of them through a letter and photos of a, you know, of Nevis and the condition it is now, and knowing that that would be something we would not build in our city limits. And I'm not sure how acutely they are aware of the need for the road, so I want to represent that the road would be needed, but not in the condition of how it will be built out. Because again, the councilperson and of course, the administration already hears about open ditches and the need to clean them and the safety and the flooding that they create, and also the lack of street lighting. And again, I don't understand how a major road would be developed so that it was a two-lane street when it's already, you know, put down as a major roadway, even the extension would be a major street. I had a million questions. I asked them. I got some information back, but it just got me to the point when I realized it was on your agenda. I didn't even realize you were mirroring the council as far as the agenda items being the same. And that's why I took the liberty to come down and address you at this point. It has nothing to do with politics, has, I mean, there's absolutely nothing here, because I agree with your county engineer. The road would be good. There's not, there's not, there's not a disagreement there. But I know nothing about the topography of the area. I've never hiked it back there. I've never seen maps. I was not at the table. The last conversation I had about this project was strictly with our city engineer. It was more than a year ago, and it was a casual conversation, and I just assumed, being from the city's engineer, that the city would oversee the program, because I knew it was part of the pay-as-you-go. And that's a way to do projects. And sometimes pay-as-you-go projects are multi-years until the allocations are all together and moving and doing a proper construction. I just, to me, it's like, I know what rings my phone, and I know what makes people feel unsafe in an area, and to see a street, a two-lane street, a dark corridor that we know will be utilized, is really setting up everybody for a very unsafe environment. And no one would, you know, would want to do that. No one is doing that consciously, is what I'm saying. But that's going to be the end result of the way this agreement is written today if everyone proceeds. And like I said, there's two pathway forward, and that is to make sure that either the administration steps up and says, "We will use additional surplus," which they have, "to create the road so that it is properly constructed, and everyone can say, 'We did this to everybody's standards within the City of Mobile.'" And also to work with the owners to find out if there is a willingness besides giving the right-of-way, which is technically not a gift of property, because that is something that has to be given in a development. And it's to say, "How much capital would you like to put towards this project to make it so that it's a standard that when you do develop the area, the rest of the area develops in the proper manner?" And I was told we could get sidewalks from future developers, but if there are open ditches, that's never going to happen. And again, I've not seen the plans. And it's, and it's like all of the stresses that we know create something that's not a good environment is getting ready to percolate here and to move forward. And I'm not saying that anyone did anything that was wrong. It's just a matter of how do you do it the best you can on behalf of the people that you all represent? And that is, no one would want this in their district. It's just going to be phone calls and concerns for a very long time till it's repaired and fixed, because those things are already happening on Nevis. I get concerns about Hillcrest not being lit appropriately all the time.
Then light it.
I, yes, we have done that. We have added sidewalks. We've done everything we can.
I mean, we spend $5 million to build a road, light it. If that's what you want, light it. Do it.
Okay, but this is a two-lane street that's a major street, and it's not being constructed to any kind of standard.
We got that. We understand that, because we're dealing with traffic flow. That's, that is, our focus is traffic flow. We're trying to keep people from having to go through Tillman's Corner. We're trying to take the traffic out of Tillman's Corner and send it directly to the interstate. Traffic flow, we understand. We are not set up for curb and gutters. We are not set up. We're county. So if you want curb and gutters, and if you want lights, you come up with the money.
Well, I don't disagree, but while it's in its planning stages, this is the time to do it.
So you're upset because you weren't included in the planning of it?
It's not to do it after you construct, and after you put people into an unsafe environment.
It's not an unsafe environment. You keep saying that. That is not true.
Commissioner, I may have to disagree with the councilwoman. This typical section-
We would never put someone in unsafe environment.
We're not going to construct a roadway segment that we consider to be unsafe. It will be very safe. It will comply with all the county standards, clear zones, slopes. It will be a safe environment. Same thing east of Hillcrest Road. Now, it's typical with planning agencies and constructing agencies such as the county commission when we're building new roads. You build a segment that will last 20 or 30 years, and you save that additional millions and millions of dollars to construct additional lanes at a later time. I mean, we do that with Schillinger's Road, lots of our major corridors. We build a two-lane section first, and it suffices, and then we come back and we build a five-lane curb and gutter section later. And you're saving that 30, 40 million dollars over a period of 20, 30 years. I mean, that's, that's just typical, how we do things. But we're not going to build an unsafe segment of road.
And we certainly don't. And we construct roads all the time. However, would you not agree that in this case, if there was lighting along the stretch of that road as opposed to no lighting, that that would not improve opportunities for safety?
I don't think there's any doubt in anyone's mind that it would make it safer, but that's not to say that it would be an unsafe road.
No, it would not be an unsafe road, but it would improve safety, and that's exactly why the city put those standards in place.
Okay. Well, if they're willing to pay for that, they need to take this project over as the lead agency, and we can provide them the funding that we have allocated through the pay-as-you-go programs, and they can do whatever they want to.
And I think that would be an excellent idea, and I would support that.
Okay. All right.
I think that's the whole idea, is that the timing to be here has nothing to do with anything that's personal, because I agree that the road would open up and would create a safety valve as far as egress and ingress to Highway 90 and I-10. But at the same time, it's a major road. The link that you're getting ready to do would probably be considered a major road as well, and you're not talking about a rural area of town anymore, so the amount of traffic it will take. And I am sorry if it seems as though it's personal with saying something is unsafe, but there are certain safety methods that are put in place on an urban street that should be part of this construction, but the time to do it is now, not later. And I know that I will do everything with my colleagues to ask them to hold this up as well, because I think there's other pathways to do it a lot better. And I cannot stress more passionately that it's my job as the councilperson to anticipate that when this is done in the condition that this agreement says will be constructed is not the standards for City of Mobile streets.
Okay. Thank you. Dana, do we have any other speakers?
Yes. Hello? Yes, we have Darren Eckenhoff, Eckendoff? Yes, it's item number, you're still coming to speak.
Number 42. Mine stops at 40. Am I missing something?
It's on the property across from Tanner Williams.
This is the new one. Got you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, sir. Welcome.
We just had, we live across the street from this property. We thought it was actually the property behind us that was being developed.
Which one are you referring to here on this?
It's the property that is being subdivided.
Jockish, okay.
Yes. I just, I just talked to the pre-owner. I guess he is taking two, three-acre lots and dividing it into a five-acre lot and a one-acre lot. Is that correct? So they're not building any subdivision there. They're- So they're not building any subdivision there. They're.
That is correct.
Okay. So that was my concern that they were building a subdivision and we weren't notified about it.
And we get that quite often. The word subdivision gets everybody stirred up, but that's just a term we use to actually split a piece of property up.
Yeah.
Is this for family purposes? Do, do we know if this was family?
They sold it to somebody else. He had a, uh, shop on one part of it and a house on another part of it. So he's keeping the shop, but he sold the house and now that the gentleman wanted the back part of the, of the other lot to be involved in the sale of the property. So instead of having three acres, now he's going to have five acres, the new owner.
Does that answer your question and allay your concern?
Yeah, that was my concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I speak on Nevis property on that development of the road?
Sure.
Are they going to be putting, because I drive that all the time. We always come from, we just came back from Florida and we took Nevis home. Um, what my question is, is at Hillcrest and Nevis, she is correct, there is only one, one light there along that road. The other question that I have is, is there going to be a traffic light there or is that going to be a roundabout that is going to be involved in that road now?
Commissioners, my understanding is the light that has been installed there presently uh, is there structurally, but it has not even been hooked up yet. The answer to the gentleman's question is whenever this project is constructed, there will be a signalized intersection constructed there at Hillcrest Road.
Red light.
There'll be a red light?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'd rather have a roundabout myself, but.
I would too. Those roundabouts are pretty expensive. I think they're about a million bucks a piece.
Really? Compared to a traffic light?
Yeah. Well, no, they're, they're a lot safer. I like the roundabouts. Don't get me wrong. I do. They're just awful expensive. Very expensive. But they, they do, they, they save a lot of serious accidents. Uh, we'll get a few little fender benders in the roundabout, but we don't get any of those T-bones. Uh, those are the ones that really people get hurt. So hopefully we'll get some more roundabouts in the future. Thank you.
Would, would you, uh, give us your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Gerald Ickolt.
And your address?
11560 Tanner Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana?
We have three individuals that would like to speak about, um, AMNS. We have Warren Matthew, Miriam Ayers, and Sean Cochran.
Commissioner Ludgood, Commissioner Carl, and Commissioner Hudson, thank you so much for this opportunity to appear before you today. Uh, my name is Warren Matthews. I'm with the law firm of Byrne Forman and I'm here on behalf of AMNS Calvert. Uh, with me today from the company are Miriam Ayers. She's our chief people officer. And Sean Cochran, uh, he's the general manager of manufacturing technology and our project manager. We're here before you today to respectfully request formal approval of part of the county's incentives commitment for an exciting new expansion project that everybody within the chamber and the state and the county has referred to for a while now as Project Gator. Project Gator, um, will entail the construction, equipping, and startup of an electric arc furnace and some ancillary projects. Here's some details. The project will require an estimated $685 million of capital investment. It will, uh, we're going to add, uh, an estimated 200 new project full-time employees and that represents about $11.8 million of additional payroll each year. And that will increase the company payroll to over a hundred million dollars each year. We're looking at a two-year construction and commissioning schedule. And once completed, the project will be capable of producing, uh, 1.5 million metric tons of steel slabs. Uh, company officials have referred to Project Gator as a transformational opportunity for the Calvert facility. Project Gator will be very, very beneficial for the long-term sustainability of the Calvert facility. I'm going to ask Miriam to come speak a little bit about, uh, the company's community involved.
Good morning.
Good morning. I hope I'm, is it, can you hear me with my mask on? Okay, good. So I'm just going to say a few words about the engagement of AMNS with the community. Like every other company, we have a strategy, we have a mission, and we have values for the execution of our business. But on top of that, AMNS has a very active focus and a strategy on how we engage with the community. And I would like to say a few words about that. So we have defined a couple of chapters where we focus on with our community. One is education. We have workforce development. We have environment. We have health and wellness and we have the engagement as such. We have that on three different levels. One is that we do grants and we do sponsorships and we do donations focused on organizations who are working around the chapters that I just told you about. And in the last three years, we have spent $1 million, uh, on pure money that we give out to, uh, education forces like the universities, on minority groups, uh, on other elements, on environmental groups in, uh, in the area. The second one is our active involvement as a company. Again, focused education, environment, health. And what we do, for example, is we are very active in all initiatives that focus on STEM. Because for the STEM is all the science, technology, engineering, and math programs, which is a hot topic in a lot of the schools and we are actively working with different schools, with different programs. For example, we fully sponsor a STEM camp that's in Citronell every year. Unfortunately, not this year because of COVID, but that's all paid for by, um, AMNS. And we give children who normally don't have the opportunity to engage in these activities, we give them a week-long experience where they play with, uh, different sciences, excuses, excuse me, Lego blocks and all different projects. We also sponsor the best robotics camp, um, in that area and, uh, school focuses, uh, in the STEM activities. We do summer interns. We sponsor World of Opportunities, an initiative from a school community that, uh, allows children to have a taste of different jobs once they graduated. We have a good amount of our team members are on the board of different organizations with the universities, um, with local organizations. Um, and as an organization, we also, for example, are very involved in, uh, Project Leadaway, which is a relatively new program where certain schools who are volunteering to try new methods of teaching and where they, uh, prove to the kids that whatever they learn in school is useful in their day-to-day life. And we have donated materials. We have donated lectures. So we are engaged in that as well. And last but not least, we initiated a year ago, a program which is called Calvert Cares. And Calvert Cares is our own team members who volunteer to do all kinds of initiatives within the community. Um, we have hundreds and hundreds of hours that, uh, from the CEO to anybody in the company goes out during their free time and volunteers in education, in cleanup, in the chili cook-off for cancer awareness, whatever. So every year we decide what we're going to sponsor, where we're going to give our time to and to show that as an organization, we really want to engage with the community and give back to the community in different ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Uh, the specific request that I believe is action item 18 is before you today is a non-educational property tax abatement for years 11 through 20 for the project. On behalf of AMNS Calvert, we truly appreciate your consideration of this request and thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dana, any other speakers? There she is.
There are no other speakers, commissioners.
All right. Thank you. Dana?
Good morning. Item number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 14th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved. Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing, consider the recommendations from the Small Business Relief Grant Program Committee to award grant to one local business that is experiencing financial hardship with the COVID-19 public health crisis located within Mobile County, Alabama, for the purpose of promoting the economic and industrial development of the county in accordance with amendment number 772 of the Constitution of Alabama.
We call to order a public meeting and on the Small Business Relief Grant Program as we have before us. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? I think this is the last one too, uh, that we have.
It is the last one.
It's the last one. Good. All right. Let's move forwards. Thank you.
Item number four, approve awarding of grant funds to the following business in the following amount that is experiencing financial hardship with the COVID-19 public health crisis within Mobile County, Alabama, for the purpose of promoting the economic and industrial development of the county in accordance with amendment 772 of the Constitution of Alabama. Navco Pizza, sole proprietorship, in the amount of 7,500 to be used for payroll, utilities, and rent expense for five employees for the next two months.
So moved.
Yes.
No.
Five, approve regular meeting to be held on November 16th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. in the Mobile Government Plaza Auditorium.
So moved. Second.
Item six, approve EFP 326-20 contract with Grand Bay Middle School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $6,290.78 from District 3 funds to purchase a safety fence for the football stadium.
So moved. Second.
Item seven, approve EFP 325-20 contract with Alba Middle School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $4,720 from District 3 funds to purchase new equipment for outdoor basketball courts.
So moved. Second.
Item eight, approve EFP 102-21 contract with Mobile Symphony, Inc. in the amount of $35,674 from District 1 funds for its preludes and string program for District 1 schools.
So moved. Second.
Item nine, approve EFP 201-21 contract with Mobile Symphony, Inc. in the amount of $26,421 from District 2 funds for its prelude and strings program for District 2 schools.
So moved. Second.
Item 10, approve EFP 103-21 contract with Delta Resource Educational Association, Mobile, Inc. in the amount of $15,500 from District 1 funds for educational programs.
So moved. Second.
Item 11, approve CDP 102-21 and CDP 201-21 sponsorship with Camp Rappa Hope Foundation, Inc. in the total amount of $750 to be equally divided between District 1 funds and District 2 funds in the amount of $375 each for its annual Turkey Trot for Hope 5K run.
So moved. Second.
Item 12, approve sponsorship with Mobile Area Veterans Day Commission in amount.
Do we, do you need to abstain on 11?
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you. I was just staying quiet. I need to abstain, number 11.
Okay. Item number 12, approve sponsorship with Mobile Bay Area Veterans Day Commission in the amount of $5,000 from General Government Special Projects Funds for its annual Veterans Day celebration.
So moved. Second.
Item 13, adopt a resolution authorizing a request of county garage to dispose of certain items from fixed asset inventory lists, declare surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved. Second.
Item 14, authorize request of county garage to sell surplus vehicle, 2005 Ford F-150, vehicle number 2114, in the amount of $1,500 to the City of Valhalla Battery.
So moved. Second.
Item 15, approve change order number two for CCP 2018-005, Chica Sabo Park Administration Building and Americans with Disabilities Act upgrades with Thomas Industries, Inc. The change will increase the contract by $1,889.66 and the new contract total will be $701,151.11.
So moved. Second.
Item 16, authorize advertisement for bids, Project CIP 2019-001M, renovation of property at 355 North Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama.
So moved. Second.
Item 17, approve agreement with the city of Mobile for a two lane extension of Nevis Road within the corporate limits or police jurisdiction of the city of Mobile from Hillcrest Road to Solly Road for the city's contribution of 1.5 million and to authorize the commission president to sign all documents related to this agreement.
So moved. Moved the whole item over?
Yes. Second.
Abstain?
Item number 18, approve tax abatement agreement with AMNS Calvert LLC for granting abatements for Mobile County non-educational real property and personal property Avalorum abatement taxes for the project for years 11 to 20, subject to legal review.
So moved.
Uh, I have some discussion on this one. First of all, I would like to thank all of the representatives from, uh, that are here today from AMNS Calvert. Um, we thank you. And Miriam, where are you? Where did you, there's, thank you for, uh, telling us about, uh, your community support and, and the focus on education and your engagement efforts. Uh, I think that's very important for us to hear. Um, and, and we appreciate the investment that AMNS Calvert has made in, in our community over all these years. We have been partners all the way and, and it, it has been a very good partnership. Uh, I won't belabor my comments from Thursday, um, but, but I would say that all that aside, uh, I, I think that the investment that the county has made in the part, this partnership all these many years ago and that additional partnership, the initial partnership was with, uh, Tiss and Krupp. But, and, and of course, the, the facility has changed hands and is now owned by AMNS Calvert. But I think that that initial partnership still transcends that ownership. And the amount of funding that the county has put into this partnership is, is an incentive, investment to, to have this, uh, the steel manufacturing work happening in Calvert has been, has been substantial. And in that amount of time, the state offered to pay us, uh, the state, because they could not borrow the money, asked the county, uh, they, the county agreed to borrow $34 million on behalf of the state in addition to the amount of money, the, the 36 million that the county was putting into the project. Uh, when we borrowed the money, we agreed to pay interest. And for whatever reason, even though the county, the state agreed to, to pay the county back with their $34 million in, with road projects, the, the state did not agree to pay the interests. And that was substantial, $32 million. So with, with all those figures, um, if you subtract the road projects, which, which the state has been very forthcoming and has been working well with us. We're, we're not all the way there yet with the amount of money that we agreed to borrow, but we're getting close. Uh, the, and interest, the, the county has put $138 million in this project and that includes, uh, the first abatement, the years one through 10. The second abatement, uh, is a $10 million, uh, investment as well. And, uh, and I, I looked to see what abatement, if you can, if you add what the city, the state, uh, and the county have invested in terms of abatements, uh, that figure is well over a half a billion dollars. That's 600, over $600 million total. So, you know, the, I just want you to know where I'm coming from with this is I, I, I believe that the county has been a good partner. We have invested, uh, heavily in, in the success of this steel manufacturing facility. And, and I feel that, uh, that this is just a step further than we need to take. And so that's the reason that I am, uh, not supporting this move here today. But I want you to understand that. It is not because that I, I don't appreciate the partnership and, and that I don't appreciate the jobs because we do. and, and that I don't appreciate the jobs, because we do.
And I, I'd just like to add, I, I agree with Commissioner Hudson that we've, we've made a significant investment, and probably if we were doing it now, we would not be spending, we would not be investing at the level that we invest at this time. It was a complicated time. I came onto the commission in October two thousand and seven, and I think that was October, and then November was the groundbreaking. And I think they started business twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. And one of the things that, that I've always said when I start to look at community economic development investment, because it's something that I'm, I'm not an expert about. But I look at the number of jobs that it's going to bring and the amount of money that those jobs are going to pay. And from that figure, I look at what will be the continuing daily investment. And in this case, since twenty-eleven, AMNS Calvert and predecessors have invested one point nine billion, that's billion with a B, in payroll dollars. They've paid more than a hundred and eight million dollars in property taxes, a four-hundred-million-dollar capital investment just for AMNS Calvert, and now with Project Gator, an additional six hundred and eighty-five million dollars. So while it was a lot of money, and I don't argue with that, it is the gift that keeps on giving, and given, and when I say that, when I think about the number of families' lives who were transformed, who've been transformed by having a job at a place like a Tissin Crub or AMNS Calvert. I, when I graduated high school in nineteen seventy, if you could get a job at Scott or IP or one of the chemical companies, that was, you, you were kind of set for life, and you knew that you were going to be able to buy a house for your family and send them to college. But now those kind of jobs have gone away, where you can do that in high school with little training. These manufacturing jobs are still available. You don't have to have a college degree. And when I look at what they're doing with those students that are coming out of Citronell High School, where they're coming in and making more than their parents have ever made. It is just, it's a lot of money, and I, I understand the concern. But I just believe that, on balance, for me anyway, the, the continuing contribution in, in terms of community involvement and, and payroll makes it more palatable, and, and for that reason, I, I move that we approve this item. And I lost it, item eighteen, to extend the tax abatements for eleven through twenty years.
A second.
And I oppose.
Item number nineteen, adopt a resolution to provide Tier One benefits to Tier Two employees and increase the contribution rates of current Tier One employees to equal the rates of the new Tier One employees effective October one, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty, approve EFP one oh four dash twenty-one contract with Omega Community Outreach in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars from District One funds for transportation fees to the HBC Tour in Washington, D.C.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-one, adopt a resolution authorizing the request of probate court to dispose of certain items from fixed asset inventory lists, declare a surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-two, approve EFP three twenty-seven dash twenty contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County to benefit Dolphin Island Elementary School in amount of nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars and forty cents from District Three funds to purchase technology equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-three, approve amending contract with WAS Design, Inc. to add construction, engineering, and inspection services for the construction of Phase One A of the Escataboah Hollow Park and Camp Ground Project, Go Mesa eighteen dash oh five, for a fee in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and fourteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-four, approve CDP three twenty-three dash twenty sponsorship with Dolphin Island Heritage and Arts Council, Inc. in the amount of two thousand dollars from District Three funds for the Dolphin Island Native American Virtual Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-five, approve amendment, amendment to the appropriation contract with Young Leaders of America, EFP two oh two dash twenty, to make provision for the use of remaining funds on hand.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-six, authorize advertising a request for proposals for development of a Mobile County Park System master plan.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-seven, approve lease agreement with the City of Mobile related to the city's occupancy of Government Plaza at an initial rate of one point five million dollars for a period of five years commencing October one, two thousand and twenty, and terminating on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-eight, adopt a resolution declaring the existence of an emergency affecting the voting public and poll workers' health and safety as a consequence of the need to deliver and return additional equipment to polling sites due to ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic. There is insufficient time in advance of the general election to bid the additional equipment's cost of delivery and return. Approve amendment of bid one dash twenty awarded to Tide Moving and Storage, LLC on February tenth, two thousand and twenty, increasing the cost of delivery and return for general election from fourteen thousand to forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents without public advertisement.
So moved.
Second.
Item twenty-nine.
Can I ask a question on that one real quick? Does anyone know if we can get that money back through the PPP money, PPE money? PPP money? That the state has?
We can ask.
You mean the cares?
Yeah.
You can ask.
Okay. Let, let's ask, because I'd like to, see if it's get that forty-two thousand dollars back.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, ju, I'm sorry, Judge Davis sent us an email yesterday. I'm trying to see if there's anything in it that requires action. I'm sorry. I should have asking us stand by contingency plan to deliver in case of bad weather.
I think he noted his concerns. I, I don't know that there was any
Right, there wasn't an action.
Although, he's warning us there could be. We might need to stay tuned here.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to check.
Now, that was a good thought.
Thank you.
Item twenty-nine, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty, approve annual maintenance contract with Central Time Clock, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine dollars for Rapid Print AR dash E time clock for the period of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-one, approve annual maintenance contract with Thompson Cat in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-one cents for one snorkel lift and one JLG lift for the facilities and maintenance department.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-two, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Pinnacle Networks in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents for NetCloud Mobile Essentials under the current State of Alabama contract MA nine 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 one six zero 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 seven five for the sheriff's office.
You sure you got enough of those?
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-three, adopt resolution awarding sole source contract to facility dude by Dude Solution Software, program maintenance edge and inventory edge in the amount of twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents for the facilities and maintenance department.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-four, adopt a resolution awarding sole source contract to Assessment Advisors, LLC utilizing income work software in the amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars for the Revenue Commissioners Office.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-five, recommend approving agreement with Alabama Power Company for an LED light at the intersection of the new entrance for Mobile County Public Works Road and Bridge Camp One on House Ferry Road.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-six, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-seven, recommend approving pre-application for federal assistance ninety percent funding for the Jeremiah Denton Airport fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Also approving the resolution authorizing the county commission to make an application to the State of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for five percent funding for airport funding for the Jeremiah A. Denton Airport fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This pre-application requests available reimbursement for design and environmental permitting to replace Buckhead Phase One and Remark Roomway twelve dash thirty CCP zero zero three dash twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-eight, recommend awarding bid for MCP zero zero one dash twenty RA forty-nine dash zero two dash twenty, resurfacing and striping striping roads, Solly Road from Three Notch Crona Road norally to Cottage Hill Road to the Mobile Asphalt Company, LLC for their low bid in the amount of one million one hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Item thirty-nine, recommend approving supplemental agreement number six with John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., for Project CIP dash two oh one three dash forty, CIP two thousand and five fifteen zero zero six E and CIP two thousand and nineteen zero zero two B, Mobile County Soccer Complex, Phase One, for replanning and restaking trees, thereby increasing the contract in the estimated amount of six hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Item forty, recommend adopting a resolution setting the following speed limits as listed below for road segments of roads and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-one, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreements for Track Twelve in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and Track Fifteen in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars for Project MCR two thousand and eighteen two oh five, Barlow Road and Havens Road.
So moved.
Second.
Item forty-two, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision of Jockish Subdivision and approving preliminary and final plat of re-sub of lots six and seven, Rona Estates, and approving preliminary and final plat of Robert Field Subdivision and approving preliminary and final plat of Nel, Nelson Farms.
So moved.
Second.
Item forty-three, recommend approving final plat of Amelia Lake, Phase Five, and accepting road rights of way as shown on the following subdivision plat for the following streets. Gwyn Court, White Avenue, Amelia Drive East, and accept the roads in this subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with the drainage system as it affects said roads, and accept the warranty deed for the rights of ways indicated on this plat. Forty-five lots, Gwyn Court, White Avenue, and Amelia Drive East, District Three.
So moved.
Second.
Item forty-four, approving, accepting, hold harmless, and indemnity agreement for the use of county equipment from the City of Sims.
So moved.
Second.
Item forty-five, recommend approving annual work order two four seven nine six to provide labor, equipment, and materials as needed to the Cody Road Boys and Girls Club. The costs will be charged to GFP zero nine three.
So moved.
Second.
And commissioners, we have four add-ons. Number one, approve lease agreement with NASPO Value Point for postage weighing scale in the amount of forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents per month for thirty-six months for the mailroom.
So moved.
Second.
Item two, accept grant award from the Bureau of Justice Assistance under the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, bulletproof vest partnership program in the amount of five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents for the project period April one, two thousand and twenty, through August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
I've only got the first two. There's not four on my list.
I only have two on mine.
We only have two on our list, not four.
There's one sheet with just one item on it, and then I was just given a resolution about state of emergency.
Sandra, was that what you brought up? No, that wasn't it. Okay.
One more late, the emergency declaration for
Yeah, that's item number four, and number three is to approve the event space rental agreement with Abashraian Center for the use of premises at seventy-seven oh one Hit Road as a polling site.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Item number four, approve resolution declaring a local state of emergency as a result of tropical storm Zeta and waving procedure informalities required by law.
And would you explain why that is necessary at this point?
After consulting with the county administrator, Mr. Hodges this morning, and with Mr. Mitchell, our very appropriate public works director, we're doing this as an anticipatory in case there's a problem, the commission would not be called back into session to declare the emergency.
So it's your recommendation that we go ahead at this point and declare an emergency?
That is the recommendation from Ricky Mitchell and Glenn Hodges. May not be necessary, of course.
Right. If, if, if it doesn't come in, into play, then it wouldn't matter. But if it does come our way and shifts and becomes stronger, then y'all would have to meet again in order to do this, and so you could do it now, and then if it doesn't hit us, it wouldn't matter, which we hope it doesn't.
Thank you.
Agreed.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Item forty-six, commission announcements and/or comments.
Ladies?
Hi, dude.
Okay.
Well, as you all know, today is Commissioner Carl's last day to, to be in a formal meeting as a commissioner.
Don't everybody get excited now?
And we just wanted to take the opportunity to thank him for his service and wish him the very best in all his, of his future endeavors. And he has been one busy guy this, at least this last year, trying to, to serve in his role as a commissioner and the campaign. And, and, and we just, we wish you and your family the very, the very best. And we decided to circulate some cards among the employees because in case you don't have an opportunity to see everybody before you, you leave, and I guess officially that will be on November the eleventh, because that's when we all
Correct, November eleventh.
On the tenth at midnight, which is
On the tenth at midnight. If you want to get legally technical about it. But anyway, so we circulated some cards to let everybody write their thoughts and feelings, and more than one person, by the way, mentioned how much they would miss those sweet treats and donuts that, that Commissioner Carl tends to, to bring in on a semi-regular basis. And, but anyway, we wanted to present those to you.
That's so nice of you.
Give him a round of applause. Good luck.
Thank you.
So, I won't miss, miss your bad jokes, but
That's serious. Nobody's gonna have Skittles waiting for you either.
But I, what I really want to thank you for, well, lots of things, but mainly because when you came here, you went to work for all of Mobile County. And I think that that's, that's what makes the difference between a good commissioner and a great commissioner. When we get here, it's the county. We have to do whatever we can to make the county better, not just what we represented. And I know that you tried to do that, and you were particularly helpful to me and up on the north end, and I think that's a good thing. And I think when people saw that, it gave them a better idea about how we work together when they see us doing things like that. So we, we just, I'm, I'm like, Commissioner Hudson, we, you, you're gonna miss us.
I will.
You only have one, me, one other vote here to get things done. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, you just
Just saying.
Trust me, I understand that one vote.
But good, best of luck to you, and, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. And I plan on being around. I have full intentions of winning next Tuesday, and I obviously will be around and helping not only the city and the county in, in Mobile, but also in, in other counties. But I tell you, it's been such a pleasure. The, the biggest growing I think I've done has been over the last eight years, because I came in with, with one idea of how I thought things should be, ran and managed and done. And it's very hard to come from a private sector and move into a government role, elected position. And I'll tell you, it was a lot of changing for me. I had, I had some, some, some very patient teachers on both sides of me here. But, but the county employees, I tell you, I could not pick a better group to work with. And no, I won't get around to every county employee. Obviously, we have some in the field and scattered up in the buildings and everywhere else, but it has been an honor. And it's been an honor to serve the people in District Three. I, I love my district. I'll always be known as the commish. I, I've got a feeling down in the south part of the county, which I'm very proud of that, and, and I'm, I'm very proud to serve with these two ladies, so thank you. We're gonna keep it short and brief, because we got business to take care of it. But, but thank We're gonna keep it short and brief, 'cause we got business to take care of. But, but thank you to everyone in the county for, for tolerating me at some moments, and for the job that y'all do as, as county employees. Thank you very much. All right.
Item 47, approve request for motion to adjourn until November 11, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, we have an indigent care board meeting.
Uh, at this time, I'd like to call, uh, the October 26, Mobile County Indigent Care Board Meeting to order.
Item one, approve minutes of the meeting of September 28, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Item two, accept the report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the indigent care fund at September 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Item three, approve the disbursement of indigent care fund cash receipts on October 14, 2020 for the period July 2020 through September 2020 to the following entities in the following amounts.
So moved.
Second.
Item four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And we are adjourned.
Is that the only time you've done?